I'm about to start recording this meeting. And I'm Mu Xianfang, we sit up here some planning department. I also have Michael Walker, my back here assist me. Since I am processing reviewing two amendment applications, I will not be able to stay in this breakout room the whole time. But I will going back and forth between this one and the other one. However, we have the applicant armor from Metro. She will provide you all a presentation about the proposed amendments. And we'll be able to answer any of your questions. I will be able to answer any questions regarding the procedure. If I'm not here when you have the questions and my back will help me to write down the questions and I will get back to you. Okay? So the meeting has been recorded. And Alma, please feel free to share your screen and introduce the project.
Sure.
And I will need you leave a little bit and I will come back. Okay? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So good evening all. My name is Alma Koppner. And I am the project lead on the Indicati project. Just kind of a little background about the project. This Indicati project was included in the Metro Next or our Long Range Plan and adopted by the Metro Board of Directors in 2019. The project runs along I-10 between 610 and the I-45 I-10 split. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. Thank you. As I was, as I said before, the project runs along I-10 between 610 and the I-45 split. As you can see on the screen, it extends the existing Metro Rapid Silver Line from its current terminus at the Northwest Transit Center to east of downtown at St. Emmanuel Street. In downtown, this project operates on street and maximizes the infrastructure of the green and purple LRT lines. It would include an exclusive bi-directional transit guideway that would be used by the existing BRT and future and current express and parking ride buses that come from I-10 and US 290 connecting the uptown and downtown corridor. The purpose of this application is to designate the Metro Rapid Indicati Project as a transit corridor street. The designation will allow for transit-oriented development at applicable streets surrounding the proposed stations and will help spur a development adjacent to the corridor. Next slide, please. So there are a total of five stations, three within the Indicati segment and two in the downtown segment. Within the Indicati segment, there is a station at Memorial Park, Shepherd Durham and Studebahn. In the downtown segment, we also have two additional stations at Franklin Bagby serving the north, the post-Houston development, and also within the walking distance of the Amtrak stations. And the end of line station is a St. Emmanuel either where the bus would turn, uh, turn back around and go back west to Northwest Transit Center. Next slide. So here are the streets that are being requested for the proposed MTFP classification. The project requests adding the Northwest Transit Center to Franklin Bagby as well as the I-69 to St. Emmanuel Street along Capitol and Rusk. We are also requesting reclassification of Bagby between Preston and Rusk and Capitol to Rusk. Next slide. So essentially, the, this request is consistent with the Metro Next Long Range Plan and supports the city's initiatives included in Complete Streets Transportation Plan and the Walkable Places as well as a TOD ordinance. And this really is a quick overview of our project. I can start taking questions at this time if you have any. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. Brad? Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's Brad Richards. I'm a property owner along the proposed route. But what I can't tell from your map is whether or not when you're, that this, this transit corridor is going to be expanding effectively the, the Katy Freeway roadwork. Because that's what I thought I read in the, in the write-up. And so the question is how that would affect neighboring landowners. So I can't tell at all because your big blue, you know, big blue square goes straight down the Katy Freeway. So you can't see what.
Well, we actually operated within the state right away, which is within the Tech Start I-10 freeway corridor. That's where the align, the proposed alignment would be. We have three major stations within that corridor at Memorial Park, which will be serving the park, and one at Shepherd Durham and the other at Studebahn. But these are all on city right-of-way. So we will not be taking any private property for the purposes of this project.
I see. And just if I could follow up. So is the, is the intention at, you know, at this, at where, where I am located, the Katy Freeway is actually down lower than the neighboring, than the area to the south. I'm on the south side of the, of the freeway. And, um, right. So was the idea that this would be an elevated, like, like, like is done over, over in the uptown area?
Yes, it will be elevated all the way out of Northwest Transit Center until it reach, it, it touches downtown where it would operate on street along Capitol and Rusk.
Okay, it may be too early to say this, but if there's a, if it will, would there be noise abatement if that is creating additional noise to the neighbors?
So we have identified select areas that may have potential noise impacts. And we have proposed some mitigation, noise mitigation treatments for the alignment, for the guideway to mitigate the noise.
When, when would the details about that part of the proposed mitigation be available?
We have actually be shared, been sharing that information with some of the community members with super neighbor who are 14, 15, and 22. So some of them are up to date on what we are going to propose in as part of the noise mitigation measures.
Is there a way for a property owner like myself to get that information?
Absolutely. We can, if you can drop your information in the chat box, we can definitely share some information with you. Or we can direct you to the appropriate staff to give you more information.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Are there any other questions or comments from the group? Yes. Yes, Dennis, you may speak.
Thank you. I'm Dennis Donovan, also a homeowner along the proposed route. I haven't seen anything published on a, a potential timeline. Should this get approved? When, when would construction begin?
So we are actually, in terms of approvals, we have received a Federal Transit Administration approval on the environmental work. In terms of design, we continue to work with Tech Start, which we, we will be operating within Tech Start's right-of-way. So we continue to work with them as they also have a lot of projects within the corridor. So we're trying to fit within the same footprint of the corridor. We are working towards an agreement with Tech Start in the near future. We plan to advance design, advance design next year with construction starting in 2025 with expectation for the service to be open in late 2027. Yes, I see another hand up. Yes, Ms. Rachel?
My name's Daryl Heiny. And I own property along the I-10 corridor in the south of the State Highway Department's right-of-way. It's my understanding that the properties on the south side of I Interstate 10 are going to be taken by Metro. And so the question that one gentleman asked is what's the planned time? And if this is the case, it certainly does hamper the ability for our property owner to try and sell his property. So we need more specific information about how our personal properties are going to be impacted.
So let me reiterate, sir, we are not taking any private property. We are operating this guideway within the state right-of-way, which is within the I-10 corridor between the main lanes and the frontage road. We are not taking any private property. For the purposes of this project.
I'm sorry, but that's not the letter, the letter that I was sent indicated that properties would be taken on the south side of Interstate 10.
No, we are not taking any property from this, for this, as part of this project. I am the project manager. I am the project manager and I can assure you that we are not taking any private, private property.
I'll take your word for it.
Yes, sir. Yes.
My question here, my name is Sarah. I'm on my husband's computer. But I was in noticing some of the briefings that you have online. You are looking to add some additional flyovers when I-10 turns into I-45 and some additional lanes. While that might be public land and property, that would bring it closer to our, the property that, that we own. So I just am wondering if you can share more specifics on the plans for additional builds? And then adding to the conversation, or the comment that was earlier about the noise abatements? I'm concerned about the elevated noise if that freeway were to come closer.
So that prop, that the project you are talking about is the North Houston Highway Improvement Project, which is a Tech Start's project. And so I will refer you to them. As part of this project, we are within, again, we are operating within the state right-of-way between the main lanes and the frontage road. And we will not be impacting any private property.
I realize you're not impacting private property, but can you share the plans for what you're planning to do with the public property and the noise impact there and, and the visibility of it?
If, yes, ma'am, if you can drop your, your information in the chat box, we can direct you to the drawings of this project, some of the detailed drawings. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Yes, sir. Dennis?
Yes, thank you. In terms of the, the elevation, how high above the existing feeder will the structure be?
We are, we're still in conceptual design at this point. And because of all the different projects within the corridor that Tech Start is also advancing, we are coordinating those design elements with them. At this point, I cannot speak to the height of the structure. But we can share more of that information as we advance our design work.
So.
And so if you can also leave in your information in the next few months when we have made some advancements on our design work in coordination with Tech Start, we can share that information with you.
Yes, I'll leave my contact information in the, in the chat. The, the existing concrete wall, the, the noise abatement wall, would that be removed and rebuilt with it, with a taller structure or?
I am not certain about the noise abatement wall or the location of that wall as it, as it relates to our project. But what I can tell you is that we have considered noise treatment as part of our guideway to reduce that noise, potential noise impact as a result of this project.
The, I, it's, I have another design question, which you probably can't answer yet, but, the, it'll be one lane in each direction?
Yes, sir.
For the, for the buses? And would that be closer to the freeway over the, over the feeder road? Or would it be closer to the properties?
It will be in between the main lanes and the frontage road.
Oh, in between the main lanes and the frontage, I see.
Yes.
So it won't be directly over the feeder, the, the frontage road?
Yeah, it, it won't be between the main lanes and the frontage road.
I see.
And we do have a video of that alignment on our webpage at RideMetro/Indicati. If you are interested to see that video, we have a pretty cool video about, it's still very conceptual, but it gives you an idea of how we travel along that corridor.
And would you repeat the location of the video? It's RideMetro.
Backslash Indicati.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Yes, Rachel?
This is Daryl Heiny again.
Oh, Daryl, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, man. There are no contiguous feeder roads from Washington Avenue to TC Gester. And there's a railroad track crossing there. What does the State Highway Department or Metro plan to do about that?
So we are going to be elevated above that, the, the cross the railroads at that particular point, location. We have, we've had been coordinating with the railroad. They have their requirements that we are moving through design. And so those coordinations are going on right now.
So, so there's not going to be a feeder road there at Washington Avenue going eastbound? So, so is it going to stay the way it is?
That would be, that really is a Tech Start question because the guideway is separated from, totally from the freeway or any movements on the freeway.
Well, am I to assume that y'all are going to put your Metro-raised roadway on Tech Start property?
Yes. We're, we're working within the Tech Start footprint. Yes.
And Tech Start has agreed to do this?
We are working towards an agreement. Yes, sir.
But they haven't agreed to it yet, have they?
We have been in coordination and we're working towards an agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question about this project. Is it competing for space with the Tech Start project? So is this something that potentially can be impacted long-term?
It, it is. I mean, it's a constrained footprint within the, if you've traveled the I-10 corridor, it's a constrained corridor. But we have made some advancements in, in regards to how the alignment of the BRT will travel along I-10 between, like I said, the main lanes and the frontage road. We continue to design, progress on design. And we feel like there's a path forward for the BRT.
Yeah, I don't think that, I, I don't think that really.
I'm sorry, you are cutting out.
No, that's okay. I don't think that really answered the question. I, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, are we competing for space? So if this project goes through, then are we going to be impacted at a later point with the Tech Stop project?
I do not believe so. We have made, we have, we have done some engineering work that accommodates all the projects within the corridor. At least we've done some initial preliminary engineering that accommodates all the projects, current and future projects within the corridor. And you are welcome to put your comments and contact information in the chat box. And we can, we can get back to you on some of the details that you were looking for.
I have a question. I don't know how many people in the room for this.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
And I'm dialed in, so I can't raise my hand on Teams or anything else. And the chat function doesn't, didn't seem to work when I did it. I, it's the, you may have already gone over this and I apologize. Is the, is the project actually approved by the feds at this point? It was a little confusing as to the status of that.
Yes, we have environmental approval from the Federal Transit Administration and our next steps, advanced design and construction.
Okay, when did y'all get the environmental approval, you know?
January of this year.
Okay, and then when do you expect to start construction?
We expect to start construction sometime in 2025.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go into the chat to see if there are any questions. I will send information on the requested, request for information. Thank you.
I have another question on how to comment on this. Do we just use the comment form? In years past, it was sort of like you filled out a postcard at the MTFP, a kind of open house, which this is being done virtually. Is all the comments just going to be submitted through the regular comment process on the website?
I believe there is a city staff on here that can talk about that, that process. But otherwise, if you are not able, you can also visit our webpage at RideMetro.org/Indicati. And there's a, you can submit your comments there as well.
Well, will those comments be filtered through to, or pushed through to the MTFP? Or just to the project in general?
I guess there is a city staff who can answer, who is on here, who can ask, help answer that question. I can't speak to that.
Yes, we're going to have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We're, we're going to have two meetings. I'm trying to pull up the information for the meetings that you can. Fill out a comment card or speak at one of the MTFP commission meetings. There's two of them, but let me get the dates for you.
I thought this was one of the meetings that you could comment at.
This is just like an informational meeting of what's up and coming. So you can prepare for the commissions. Okay, so our public hearing for this is July 27th at 1:00 PM. And then we also have the Commission Action Meeting on September 21st, also at 1:00 PM.
Okay, I'm seeing a comment period that says May 15th to the July 7th. And then below it is a button that says Public Comment Form.
Yes, yes, that is the form that you fill out for these meetings.
Hi, this is Sharon. I'm just jumping in. It sounds like there's a question about the comment form online.
Thanks, Sharon. Yes.
Yes.
In other words, there's the comment form online. And as you know, I'm familiar with this process. There were, when we did it in person, there was comment cards. And then after that, there was the printout of the comments that went to the next level. So how are we doing that? One, is the process the same? And two, obviously, it sounds like it's being virtualized, but is that process the same where comments received in the next whatever? Maybe it's only tonight, whatever, I don't know. Maybe it's the next week. They get printed out and they go with the application to the next level.
Yes, we actually will combine all of the comments. We want to make sure that everybody's voices are heard. So if you can attend virtually, and for instance, we're recording this meeting, this will be transcribed later and we'll take your comments and concerns and make sure that that's part of the comment form. The comment form online is there for anybody that wants to go in. You can comment here, you can comment online, you can comment in person on the card if you attend the meeting in person. You can call us and we'll write your comment down. You can send an email. Whichever form is easiest and most convenient for you, whichever form you decide to utilize, we will take it and compile them all so that the Planning Commission will be aware of your concerns and your questions. And we'll put that in a form that will be, I guess, we'll print it out for the planning commissioners. We'll put it in their tablet. They can see it. They have access to it and we'll group it based upon the amendments on which you're making the comment for.
Okay. All right. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time. So I jumped in here just to make sure everybody's okay. Alma, you all right? Mu Xian, all as well?
I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to go ahead and bounce to another meeting to make sure that everybody's doing okay. But yeah, they can come, the residents can comment in any way that we have listed. And we want to make sure that everybody does so that we compile them all. Let me know if you need anything. I'm here. If you do, I'm going to bounce around. Thank you. Bye.
Brad, I have provided the detailed drawings to the alignment in the chat box, if you can see it. I think it will give you a better understanding of how we operate within the state right-of-way in regards to this project.
I'm, I'm looking at it now.
Okay.
Having, it's not clear quite yet, but thank you for.
It's a lot of information too, so take your time. And if you have any questions, please reach out to me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Brett, can we join the main meeting now?
Yes, I think, yes, we can.
So how do we go back?
We just leave. When you hit leave here, it'll take you back to the main meeting.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.